Please make your way to your seats. Good morning, welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners. It's June 12th, 2014, time is 9:00 a.m. Please take a moment to silence your telephones, make sure they're in the vibrator or some other mode, please, so we don't interrupt each other. This morning, we have Reverend Dewey Morris from Faith Baptist Church, who's going to do the invocation for us. If you'd step up, please, sir. The right-hand button will turn your red light on like this.
Let's pray. We thank you, our Father, today that we have the opportunity to come together and that our leaders can come together and make these decisions. And I pray that you'd give wisdom as the decisions are made, Lord, a lot of things are being discussed, and important things, for those of us who are citizens in the county. And I pray that, Lord, great wisdom be given to our leaders. I pray that everyone here would recognize your authority, and that all authority comes from you. I pray that, Lord, we know that whatsoever we ask according to your will, that you hear us, and if we know that you hear us, we know we have what we ask for. So I pray today, Lord, that you'd give wisdom, and we know that's your will. I pray that, A, that if there be anybody here today that knows you not in the free pardon of sin, that they would come to that realization before it's eternally too late. Lord, we know that's your will. I pray that, Lord, that our leaders would make decisions that we, as citizens, might live a quiet and peace of all life. I know that you will, and so, Lord, we just commit these things to you, and thank you that we have a good county to live in. And I pray that you would, again, bless our leaders in a special way, and we'll thank you and praise you for what you do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Commissioner Salter, will you lead us to the plate, sir?
........................................................................ Next is the approval of the minutes of the May 8th, 2014 Regular Meeting, and the May 22nd, 2014 Regular and Special Meetings. And you've had a chance to review those. I move approval without objection.
Here, none. They're approved. Next is approval of the agenda, and I'll start on my right. Commissioner Salter.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one addition this morning, and that's, I'd like to add it to item number one, as we discussed the courthouse. And that's a resolution from the City of Milton. We have Mayor Thompson here this morning to read that resolution.
Okay, we'll make that number two under Economic Development. City of Milton. Commissioner Lynchard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman. I will note that I'm going to hold a meeting down in the south end of the county next Thursday night, Thursday of week, just to give our residents an update on the flooding situation and the repairs down in the south end of the county, in my district.
Okay, sir, is that going to be at Tiger Point?
It is.
At six o'clock?
Six o'clock, Thursday.
Okay, six o'clock, Thursday, Tiger Point.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for that. Mr. Walker.
I think Ms. Jones has an add-on.
Thank you, sir. I would like to add on the Commissioner's consideration of joining in a rules challenge to the Department of Juvenile Justice's promulgated rules regarding secure detention costs, join with a host of other counties in challenging the rules. I'll talk to you more about that.
Yes, that's very, very important, and we'll get you to update us on that. I'll make that item number one, A, of the administrative, and we can deal with that while we have a large crowd, because that is a very vital issue. Mr. Blalock.
Just note that we have filled in the blanks on the emergency road repairs, and we have a recommendation for those three areas. And it's on the agenda.
Ms. Bell. Ms. Spencer. Okay. All right. The agenda is modified as noted. We have a proclamation this morning, and Karen Thornhill is going to receive it. If you'll come up here, we'll read the proclamation, then we'll get you up here and make a group picture.
I don't have a copy of the proclamation.
It's okay, I've got it right here. "County of Santa Rosa Proclamation. Whereas floods can happen anytime, anywhere, and without warning, and whereas floods creating emergencies of great concern to Santa Rosa County with imminent threat to life and property, and causes hundreds of millions of dollars in damages to homes, businesses, and local government infrastructure, and whereas the state of Florida has received 21 presidential disaster declarations for flooding since 2000, and whereas Santa Rosa County has suffered major flooding events in 1998, 2004, 2005, 2009, 2011, 2013, and 2014, causing millions of dollars in damages and destroying or damaging thousands of homes and businesses. And whereas damage from a flood is not normally covered under a standard homeowner's policy, residents are encouraged to review their flood risk and purchase flood insurance to protect their property from flood. And whereas National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, has named May the 25th through May the 31st, 2014, as National Hurricane Preparedness Week, and June the 1st is the start of hurricane season, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County concur that a public that is well informed of the dangers associated with flooding can improve its preparedness and reduce the occurrence of death and injury as a result of severe flooding, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County that the week of June the 8th through June the 14th is proclaimed Flood Safety Awareness Week, passed and adopted by a vote of four yays, zero nays, and zero absent at this 12th day of June, 2014 meeting, signed by me as chairman. Okay. Public hearings. We'll have a public hearing at 9:30 or thereafter, no earlier than 9:30, and it will concern the vacation of a portion of Platte, including lots 1, 4, and 9, Block 3, Florida Town Edition, as requested by Steve Blanton. And we will stop ourselves as near 9:30 or after as we can and deal with that issue. Economic Development is next. Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now have two items with the addition of the courthouse resolution. First one is recommend appointment of Jennifer McFerrin of the Greater Pensacola Chamber of Commerce as private sector representative on the Career Source Escuro Board of Directors, and I would move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, next is Commissioner Cole's add-on, and that's the courthouse resolution. Mayor Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this morning as Mayor of the City of Milton and representing our city council. The other night in our meeting, the regular meeting of the council, we adopted a resolution unanimously, and the resolution is a resolution expressing strong support for the sitting of the proposed new judicial center serving Santa Rosa County to be in the county seat, affirming that the need for a new judicial center, and calling on the county Board of County Commissioners to continue to provide court services in the same general location as it has been historically for over 80 years. Each one of you have a copy of the resolution, and I just want to say thank you to the task force that has done a tremendous job in working together. They came before the Downtown Redevelopment Board, and I think it was a large group, a majority of people who have not been heard and not had their voice heard, and I asked them then to do a study and to be researching things as to why the courthouse would need to stay in downtown, and give some valid answers to some questions. Their work is not done, but they've made tremendous progress, and I appreciate each and every member who has worked on that. They presented some findings to the council and convinced the council to pass this resolution, and that is passed, and I want to make this presentation today. And we hope that you would be favorable enough to include the downtown site on the referendum for the people to make a choice, if you so desire. And I know that the position you're sitting in, I do not envy that. I have sat in similar situations. It's not an easy decision to make. But I think for 80, over 80 years, '87, I believe, that substantial building has held up very well in downtown Milton on the ground that it is sitting on. And historically, I think it is a very important thing to the downtown area, and not just downtown, but to the county seat of this county, Milton, Florida, to keep that as an economic engine within our downtown. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll present you with the resolution.
Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman? I'll read this into the record. This is a resolution from the City of Milton, and it's Resolution Number 13-14. A resolution expressing strong support for the siting of a proposed judicial center serving Santa Rosa County to be in the county seat, affirming the need for a new judicial center, and calling on the county Board of County Commissioners to continue to provide court services in the same general location as it has historically. Whereas the mayor of the City of Milton convened a study group to examine the potential for a new judicial center to be cited where the county courthouse has been for over 100 years. Whereas the study group has met the charge given by the city, and whereas the study group examined cost, property conditions, community support, and expansion potential. Whereas such use of the subject property is in accordance with sound planning standards and local community objectives. Whereas the findings of the study group indicate that there are no known constraints that would prohibit the siting of the proposed new courthouse at its historic location. And whereas the study group asserts that the administration of justice for the City of Santa Rosa County would be best served if the proposed location of the judicial center would be the current location of the judicial center, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Milton, Florida, that, Section 1, the City Council of the City of Milton affirms the need for a new judicial center to serve the legal needs of the citizens and state. Section 2, the City Council of the City of Milton, in the strongest possible terms, supports the future location of the Santa Rosa County Court facilities to be the current location of the Santa Rosa County Court facilities. Section 3, the City Council of the City of Milton further calls upon Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners to include the existing site as a potential site in any question, survey, referendum, or straw poll taken for the purposes of determining the location, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Milton on this 10th day of June, 2014, signed by Mayor Thompson. We appreciate that, and we have read it into the record. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm overwhelmed by the response we've seen over the last few months. The judicial center for years now has been a thorn in our side of Santa Rosa County and the need for it, and I'm glad that I've been able to work on that for the last eight years to try to move it forward. Also appreciate the City of Milton and their memorandum of understanding and working with our county in allowing the temporary facility that we've had to use. Mr. Chairman, hearing loud and clear the folks of downtown Milton and the wishes of the city council, which the City of Milton is within District 2, always like to say that it is within District 2, but I'm trumped by the mayor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we add the language as a third option on our ballot this fall.
I believe we've already done that.
I don't know that we have.
Not by formal... I thought we put the third option on the board in Tiger Point.
No, sir. And also, you will need to decide on all ballot language at some point in the future.
Okay.
One, two, three options, and the tax question, so that'll all have to be worked out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It should have the same language as we decided on the other two properties, where there would be a comprehensive amount that citizens would expect to pay for that construction.
Yes, and a set sunset date.
Yes, sir.
And at some point, we may try to reduce those number of choices. That will be for the next set of meetings, I suppose. Mr. Chairman?
Do so without objection.
All right, just one moment. Commissioner Salter, you had a comment before we move on.
I do. I don't object to the adding that site, however, number one on the administrative committee is to recommend proposal an amount of $13,500 from HOK Incorporated for additional services for study of area adjacent to current courthouse. So I think it'd be premature for us to approve anything now until that study's complete.
I think we can make it contingent upon that study, but that's a very salient point, assuming that the conditions don't change and that the study bears out. What we have come to learn has been in the past, the geology of the site probably has not changed any, but it's a good point. So we will modify that then to...
One point, Mr. Chairman, if I might. I don't think we concluded studies on the other two pieces of property prior to putting them on the ballot, so I don't see why this would be different. I think we put, well, no, we put West 90 on the ballot and then assigned staff in HOK to come up with the figures. We've done the same thing with East Milton, Cotton Byram Property, and then did the same. So I don't see why this won't be any different where we could...
It won't make a material difference at all, Commissioner, if we make it contingent upon the findings of the engineers. We know now that the site is geologically sound, that it would require a little bit different footing, and that footing would be a million dollars, and that's still less than purchasing one of the alternative sites, and not out of the question. So I don't think it'll matter one way or the other, but we will go ahead with your amendment, I mean with your...
If I move it without objection, if not, then I'll call a question.
Okay. Move it without objection to place it on the ballot based upon approval, or based upon the engineering report, or just move it?
I mean, I don't think we base the other ones on an engineering report. To me, if citizens have an option and know the price, it may be higher, it may be lower, but I think we've seen enough response, just like we did in East Milton, from citizens to put it on the ballot.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90, East Milton. What's the purpose of spending $13,000 more in doing any more study on the site? Is it going to give us information that we need to know to make it change our decision, or...
It will validate the information. We have to know exactly... There's other issues other than just the geology of the site that we need to nail down. We haven't formalized it. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your pack, it is the proposal from HOK, and a couple of things. The site has moved, the proposal includes property to the south that wasn't included before, actually to the railroad that was not studied in 2000, 2001. That's one of the things that they'll have to look at. They'll have to review any additional requirements that the City of Milton has, the floodplain requirements that's changed in the last 12 years, whenever it was done, and also the size has changed, and not a great deal, but enough that when you're dividing it among three floors, that you're going to have to change up how things lay out. And that was discussed at Monday's committee meeting by Mr. Boyd of HOK. So specifically, they've got to make sure that as proposed and as placed on the site, that it'll work. I mean, it's similar to what was done in 2001, but it's not the same thing, because 2001 was more to the north and directly behind what was then the courthouse. Now, the modular units, as Mr. Cole had noted, were there now, so we've got to specifically study this to get comparable information for the ballot.
Did the area that you're going to study flood any time in the last five years?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would assume it did. It's in the floodplain. I don't know. That's what they're going to go back and look.
Well, that's my point. If it's in the floodplain and it flooded at least one time in the last few years, one would think that practically speaking, there's no reason to put a big building in a floodplain.
Well, you would move it above the floodplain, and that's what this study's going to show us. You just elevate it.
I don't make that decision.
Yeah. But the point is, you elevate, you know, getting out of the floodplain, you can do it in multiple ways. You can leave the area and go somewhere else, or you can go up.
And the engineer said that it would be a lot more expensive going up to make way for the floodplain.
A lot more expensive is not exactly what he said, and that's the purpose of the study.
Thank you for your...
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for your question. We appreciate you coming. Anybody else before we move on? We have a motion made without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number 1B is recommend proposal an amount of $13,500 from HOK for additional services for study of the area adjacent to the current courthouse for the proposed judicial facility, which is a matter we just finished discussing. I recommend approval without objection.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would liken that study, if they would also include the event that we have to move our services away from the courthouse, so we'll know what that expense will be, because that'll have to be...
No, sir. You weren't with us last time, but what they said they could do is to preclude that is that they're going to build the old building without disturbing anything first. I mean, build a new building south of the, on the southern part of the site first, without disturbing any of the current functions. And so that's been resolved. Yes, sir. I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number two is...
1A, DJG.
We got 1A.
DJG.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Thank you very much. Ms. Jones, we need the DJG briefing. I apologize for that.
I know you all are aware of this, but the county has been involved for the past number of years in litigation against the Department of Juvenile Justice based on the bills we receive for secure detention costs. And in 2013, we received a favorable ruling in that litigation, the endgame being that Santa Rosa County has been overbilled for secure detention costs in excess of $775,000 since 2008. And we are working with DJG and the legislature regarding refunds or credits for that amount. However, we need to look forward at this point, and DJG is currently in the process of promulgating rules for the billing of counties for secure detention costs. I am of the opinion that the rule as promulgated is in violation of the 2013 court order, and that is not a belief unique to me. I think all 67 counties believe that. So the counties have collectively, through the Florida Association of Counties, entered into an agreement to retain the firm of neighbors, Giblin, to represent as many counties who want to participate in a DJG rules challenge. And so the action for you to consider this morning is joining with the other counties in that. I forwarded to all of you information on that. There would be a petition for you to sign if you agree to participate, and the cost would be shared among the counties.
And I'll make that a recommendation that we approve the document that the county attorney will prepare for the chairman's signature, and I will take that with me. She'll transmit it electronically, and I'll take that with me next week when I go to the Florida Association of Counties Annual Conference. And this is something that all, so far as I know from the traffic I'm seeing, and my other hat is a member of the Florida Association of County Board, that all 67 counties seem to be on board with this. So it'll be a unanimous position. I move approval for the attorney to prepare our objection without objection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, hearing none, it passes.
If you are inclined to join with the other counties and permit Neighbors Giblin to represent us in this and join in the collective petition...
Absolutely, that's... Yes, that's... We were asking you to join with the other counties in the collective position and stand in opposition to this, and ask that DJG obey the court directive.
And be represented by Neighbors Giblin in that.
And be represented by that firm. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can we add a caveat to that, or could I ask you to ask Florida Association of Counties? For years now, this has been a problem, and the biggest question I have, and it's never been answered, why does it cost almost three times as much to incarcerate a juvenile as it does for our sheriff? And I think that needs to be identified by the state, because we're going to continue to have this bill, whether we get credit or not, but I think they need to have a good reason why.
Yeah, and I will bring that question with me when I go... All right, so that was item 1A, which I overlooked, and we've dealt with item 1B, which was the HOK issue. We're to item 2 now, which is discussion of the proposed amendment and restated lease agreement for Holycorp AMFI Investors or Investments for the hotel property on the Vahr Beach. You have your backup in your document, and it's been submitted to the attorney. The attorney's reviewed it, and let's first discuss the question. I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90, East Milton. Is Holycorp currently in default on the lease?
I'm sorry, ask me that again.
Is the corporation currently in fault on their lease?
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
No, ma'am.
They've paid all the taxes they were supposed to, and they've been paying the money that they were supposed to all along?
They have cleared their situation with the county.
Who wrote the new agreement with the corporation?
I'm sorry.
Who wrote the new agreement with the corporation?
I would hazard a guess that it was the general counsel for... Did we write the... Which, the original lease was written by a county attorney. Which one, I don't know. Which one, I don't know.
We sent a form to Holycorp's counsel, which they made changes, and we've gone back and forth on. So the two attorneys wrote the lease that the board is considering this morning.
And they brought us changes, requested modifications to the lease.
So the corporation's attorneys wrote the—
Right. The corporation, the modified lease is what we're working on now. The original lease was issued by this board in the seventies or something.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Jones.
When an amended lease was requested by Holycorp, we sent them over a form, one that's similar to what's been used before. Their attorneys worked on it, made requests, changes. I did the same thing. The attorneys exchanged drafts, and what's before the board this morning is the result of all of that.
And what's the essential changes in the two agreements? What's being changed?
The ninety-nine-year clock, if you will, resets today and goes forward. I don't know that I consider that a material change, in that the old lease was a ninety-nine year lease that would have rolled over at the end of ninety-nine years anyway, but this, of course, puts to paper ninety-nine years beginning now, essentially. And then it also lays out that the corporation pays taxes on the property and is entitled to any credits that it might get against the lease fees.
So is there going to be any difference in the amount of money that the corporation pays to the county under the new agreement?
Under the old and the new agreement, the percentages are the same. Five percent for room rentals, I think three percent for food. It's laid out. Those percentages, as recited, are the same in both agreements. The difference would be Holycorp being able to avail itself to the tax credit policy that the Board of County Commissioners has.
So what's different in the amount of money that the corporation is going to be paying under the new agreement? More or less money?
They'll pay taxes, which they weren't doing under the old agreement, because taxes weren't assessed, I think, when the old agreement came down the pike. So they'll pay taxes. What those taxes will be, I don't know, because we've got to build a hotel and have it assessed and have a bill associated with it, so I can't guess as to that amount.
So if they build the kind of motel that you want, you have no idea how much taxes they're going to be paying?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Well, what, she's giving you a very accurate answer, but the simplest answer to this is that the building, just like any other new building in any other county in the sovereign state of Florida, will be built. It will be when it's accepted, when it passes all the ordinances and inspections from the county. Property appraiser will go inspect it and evaluate it and put it on the tax rolls. Then the millage rate set by this Board of County Commissioners will be applied by the number supplied by the property appraiser, which will generate a tax bill that the tax collector will then present and collect.
So you can't tell the voters of Santa Rosa County how much difference they're going to be making from this corporation onto the changes?
No, not in dollars and cents. You can look at it intuitively and understand that it's going to be a very strong economic driver for the south, in fact, for the entire county because of its very presence, but it's paying, you know, it's going on the tax roll, and we, I mean, you don't seem to be grasping what I'm saying. I may not be saying it very clearly for you, but it's going to be evaluated by the property appraiser. Our millage rate will be applied to that value. That'll produce a tax bill and be just like any other property owner in Santa Rosa County, with the exception that she's paying us a percentage of some various grosses in her business.
So you don't know the value of the property under the changes in the contract?
It'll be the value of the land, plus if you assume that she's going to build a thirty million dollar hotel, it'll be the value of the land plus the value of the hotel multiplied by the millage rate, which will produce a number that the tax collector will then collect and put in the county coffers.
So how can you tell the voters of Santa Rosa County that they're going to be making more money under this new contract as opposed to the old contract? That's what I don't understand.
I understand you don't understand it, and I don't know how else to put it respectfully. I mean, it's—
But you're going to require this company to build a motel?
Well, they're voluntarily building the hotel, okay? We're not requiring them to build a hotel. We welcome them for building a hotel.
But that's what the agreement says, that you're requiring them to build a certain-sized motel?
That's right. We are entering into a contractual agreement, consideration being offered by both sides. She's given us consideration by paying us a percentage of the profits of the hotel in various categories, and we are accommodating her by making minor modifications to the lease. And you're asking me what the tax bill's going to be, and I'm trying to answer it. It's going to be the price of the land, whatever that value is, plus the price of the hotel, whatever that value is, multiplied by the millage rate that this county sets for Avalorum taxes, and then that tax bill will be collected by the Santa Rosa County tax collector.
Has the company already started building the motel?
No, ma'am.
Do they know the value of the hotel that they're going to build?
They have very close estimates as to the value of the hotel.
So what is that value?
It's in the neighborhood of thirty million dollars.
Okay, that was my question. The value of the motel under the changed circumstances is now thirty million dollars?
The value of the structure is going to be in that neighborhood, yet it may be a little bit more than thirty million dollars.
And what's the taxable value? What is it going to gain Santa Rosa County in taxes?
I'm going to ask you to get with us after the meeting, if you would, and get with Ms. Bell and Ms. Jones, and they'll explain it to you. We can't, we need to move on with the side of them. I've answered it, and I haven't done a very good job, because you still don't understand me, but we will get you the answer. But it is a very good deal for Santa Rosa County. Now, I really appreciate your questions. I really appreciate your patience with me and my inability to help you understand me, but if you can work with Ms. Bell and Ms. Jones, they will help you understand the answer to your question.
And are you going to hold off the decision on this until—
No, ma'am, we are not.
Until you can give the information to the Santa Rosa County voters?
I think everybody else probably understands it. Most of the people understand what I've said is that you take the value of the land, you add to that the value of the hotel, you multiply that by the county's millage rate, and that produces a number. Now, I'm sorry, I don't happen to have that number floating around here with me, but that's the answer to your question. And if you can get with the staff that I've just identified to you, they'll give you a pretty close estimate as to what that number will be, okay?
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, ma'am. And they can help you, just a minute. And they can help you with that, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Cantu, I think Ms. Hess was indicating she'd like to make a comment. I don't know if you've seen her from back there or not, or if she's going to speak to her on—okay.
Okay. I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number three. Item number three is recommend issuance of a certificate of public conveyance in necessity, which is a COP CN, for operation of emergency air ambulance transportation services to MedTran Corporation doing business as lifeguard. We discussed this Monday, and the backup is in the book. Any, I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number four is recommend dedication to sidewalk slash pedestrian paths surrounding Spencer Field in honor of the former commissioner, Jim Williamson, and we have staffed this through with NAS Whiting Field. They have no objections. I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number five is discussion of a development in agreement with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority for processing and transporting recyclable materials based on a proposed date, May 6, 2000, of a proposal dated May the 6th, 2014, with a caveat that I would like this to be limited to one year. I'm not sure that these folks are the answer to our problem in the long run. It certainly is the only viable short-term. Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, in the long run, we are likely to pursue another avenue, some regional approach to dealing with our recyclables. The volume of recyclable material that the county's receiving is really quite impressive, and that's not unique to Santa Rosa County. Escamby County, Opelousas County, all of our surrounding counties are in the same situation. My concern with doing it just for one year is that six months from now, we're going to start this process again, because we issued the request for proposals in January, February of this year, and we're just now getting around to coming up with a solution. So I would like to see us go for two years. That way, we'll have a full year and a half under our belt with North End Recycling, because right now, we have curbside recycling in the south end of the county. Hopefully, after this fall, we'll have recycling curbside in the north end of the county. So we'll have a good track record that we can use to formulate a plan going forward to deal with our recyclable materials, whether we do that in-house or whether we partner with one of our neighboring counties to come up with a more regional solution. But I think a year is too short. I think two years gives us some wiggle room, and this is a no-cost option for us. So I would recommend—
Okay, sir. I will ask you to entertain a modification to your modification, that we have a ninety-day opt-out if, for whatever reason, a year and a half at some point in time, that we have a better resolution of the problem, that we can opt-out. Can we get a ninety-day notice either way?
Yeah, all we're going to do is, this is just a concept of development. We're going to send that. We can include that. Quite frankly, I would think ECUA would be—
They may want a ninety-day—
Yeah, we, they—
They may want, they may want out faster than ninety days, yeah.
They may want to stop now. I'm just—
Yeah.
So I would make that in form of a motion there, too.
We can do—
Senator Michael.
Mike.
Sorry. I would make that in form of a motion without objection, that we propose a two-year lease, excuse me, with a ninety-day termination ability on either side, without objection.
Okay. Just— Commissioner Cole.
Lane, just a correction. I'm sure it was just, really, it's not a lease, is it?
Not a lease. This is the—
Memorandum of Agreement.
Yeah, okay. Let me restate that, then. My motion would be that we enter into the proposed agreement for a period of two years, provided that Santa Rosa County has the ability to terminate the contract with ninety days' written notice, without objection.
Okay. Been made without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number six is recommend the acquisition of a conservation easement on 60.6 acre parcel owned by Paul and Shelley Rupert, which is adjacent to NAS Whiting Field and an ongoing base buffering program funded by the Florida Defense Initiative grant and the U.S. Navy REPI funds. I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. We will put the administrative agenda on hold, and we'll pick back up at item number seven. And the time is now 9:42, so we're legal after 9:30, and we'll drop back and do the public hearing. We're opening a public hearing into the question of the vacation of a portion of a plat, which includes lots 1, 4, and 9, Block 3, Florida Town Edition, as requested by Mr. Steve Blanton. Is there anybody in the public here that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, hearing none, I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. This closes the public hearing, and we're back to the administrative committee. Item number seven. Item number seven, discussion of the short list of potential candidates for county attorney position. Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed on Monday, we've had some thirty-some-odd applications to the county attorney position, a number of really excellent applications, really from all over the state, so it's been hard to call through. Nonetheless, we do have to shortlist them. I have come up with a list that I would propose. I think there are, and I'll read the names, and you can compare them against your list, but these would be the attorneys that I would recommend we sit down with, we bring in for in-person interviews and formal interviews. William DeBraul has approximately eleven years of relevant legal experience. Steven Todd, fourteen years, county attorney, assistant county attorney. Lori Tetra, two years county attorney experience, thirteen years with the Water Management District. Roy Andrews, thirty-one years, city attorney, represented the property appraiser and the tax collector for some twenty-nine years. Those are the four with the specific relevant legal experience that I would like to interview further. Then we have a couple of local attorneys who don't have the specific relevant legal experience, but nonetheless, we've received, they've received significant support and letters of recommendation from local interested parties, so.
Okay. Would you go through that primary list again? I was slow getting back to my backup, and I only have Patel and Andrews.
William DeBraul, Steven Todd, Lori Tetra, that's T-E-T-R-E-A-U-L-T.
Got it, yeah.
May or may not be pronouncing that right. And then Roy Andrews. And we have, again, those are the ones that would have the specific relevant legal experience in county or city government.
So that's five, is that right?
That would be four.
Andrews, DeBraul, Patel, and Tetra.
Not Patel.
I don't know where'd I get Patel. I thought I heard you say Patel.
DeBraul, Todd, Tetra, and Roy Andrews.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, sir.
And then we have a couple of other local attorneys who've received—
Right.
You know, we've all received—
Strong recommendations.
Strong recommendations, but they don't have the, they don't have the specific legal experience of these others, but if someone wants to—
Sure.
—bring them in for interviews as well, then I think that's certainly relevant. We have, right here, we have four attorneys. Three of these would be from out of the area. Mr. Andrews is the only local attorney, so.
Well, based on that, and thank you very much for sharing your expertise with us. For those of you that don't know, Commissioner Lynchard is a licensed practicing attorney in the state of Florida. We'll instruct the staff to contact all the applicants and thank them for their interest and congratulate the short list and set up a date to do office interviews and then a joint interview here.
Do we want to interview the other local attorneys, though, who have expressed interest in the position?
Yes, yes.
There are a couple.
Right.
And I'll open it up and let you, you know, share y'all's insight and—
Sure, absolutely.
—in the process as well. I won't drive the bus completely, but—
Well, I think from what you've done and your expertise, and we certainly want to speak to those others that were strongly recommended, they're in the local area. But we need time. The clock is ticking. I don't know exactly when Ms. Jones is going to leave us, but it's within the next forty-five days, I think, and that is—
That's right. And Mr. Walker and I spoke this morning. The other two that we would entertain would be Jason English and Tiffany Sullivan. And again, that's up to the board if we want to cast that wider net. We have, Mr. Walker and I spoke about having interviews on the 23rd, the afternoon of the 23rd, as well as the morning of the 24th. We have a meeting the morning of the 23rd. I have a committee meeting. I have a Northwest Florida Regional TPO meeting in Crestview the afternoon of the 24th, so we would have to, you know, get started early on the 24th to hold those interviews. If we interview six, thirty minutes apiece, that's a three-hour shot without taking any breaks, so I just felt the need to shortlist it as much as we could, you know.
Anybody else say anything to—
My only comment, since Commissioner Lynchard is going to have a conflict on the 24th—
In the afternoon.
—in the afternoon, and then we'll be meeting on the 23rd, so that gives us two half-days. Do we want to try to jam all six of them into a half-day, or do we want to do three each day?
What we had spoken about and kind of considered would be the afternoon of the 23rd would be informal meetings with each commissioner, one-on-one, and then we will have the formal interview process in this chamber on the morning of the 24th with all of the applicants.
Okay.
And, and we could schedule those on, on the 24th. We would schedule that. I assume you would, you would, you would, we could start at, at nine, at 30 minutes apiece. That would, I think that would get us where you would need to go, be pushing it a little bit. And, and also, I assume that, that, that you would want, we, we would be, for those that are out of town, and there were, there are three on that list that are out of town, that we would be responsible for their expenses. I think that's typically what's done, and we'll take care of that. Because I want to contact these people today. I'mma call, we'll get a formal notice out to them, but I want to specifically call the ones that you've mentioned to be sure we get it on the calendar and, and kind of give them the plan. And also, if we could, if we could, assuming that you, you feel like that you've got a good list, that we, we, if you'll allow the HR to close out the recruitment, we don't need to continue to receive applications. I agree with that, and for, you know, heaven forbid we had to start over, we'd just start over. Yeah, but that's highly, highly unlikely. Right, or, yeah, go back into the list. So, yeah, let's go ahead and, and instruct the HR to close out. Okay, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we taking input from Commissioner Salter and myself, or are we gonna go with...
Yes, sir. I asked a minute ago.
Don. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Of the lists that Commissioner Lynchard presented, I had four of them as well, with the understanding that we can also interview potential local candidates as well, so you got my list.
If it's gonna be six, we, I mean, if, if, we, we need kind of a, the six or the four, whichever you propose to do. I mean, and I think that you called them out, I believe. Is there an...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cole.
And my list pretty much mirrored Commissioner Lynchard's, with the exception of Mr. DeBrau, and I had Charles Hughes. And I just, but just wanted to let folks know that.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, this doesn't require any further action.
Well, we need to set the six. I think that's...
Well, okay.
They've all been mentioned. William DeBrau, Steven Todd, Lori Tetra, Roy Andrews, Tiffany Sullivan, and Jason English.
Right, and those letters will, will flow along with all the letters to everybody expressing interest. And the staff will coordinate our office calls and then the, then the formal meeting. All right, that concludes item number seven. Commissioner Salter, yes, sir.
I was just gonna confirm, we, we, so the final list, we have six candidates. Okay, thank you.
Item number eight.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, I hate to be so pinheaded.
Yes, sir.
I know you'll get tired of this.
It's all right. We need to get this better, better right and fast.
And also, if you would schedule a called meeting for Tuesday, the 24th, for the interviews. You won't have to have a meeting, obviously, because they will be just rotating on your offices on an informal basis that afternoon of the 23rd.
Yeah, but we, we need to notice that 24th meeting, yeah.
That's, that's a...
Absolutely, it's a public hearing. All right, thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a email from Cindy Williams that says a civil service board's gonna meet at nine o'clock on Tuesday, June 24th. That's just for your information.
Okay, but they're not, not gonna be using our meeting room here. They are? They're, hmm. Well, our City of Milton's gone. They may need to, they may need to see if they can work something out with the City of Milton or an alternative site. I appreciate you calling that conflict to our attention.
Okay. So let, well, yeah, if y'all let Cindy know.
I'm sorry?
Let Cindy know, Cindy Williams.
We can, we'll work that out, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll work it out.
I mean, that, that sounds like that's gotta be something we can move around.
Yeah, good catch.
Ms. Key said that that is not a formal civil service hearing, an all-day event, that it should be a very brief board meeting over in half an hour or so.
Are we gonna give them problems with an advertised location, et cetera? They're gonna have time to react to that?
We got time to move that thing and figure it out.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Item number eight, recommends listing proposals for sale of county-owned .172 acre parcel on Patterson Town Road, including a minimum bid of $1,425, which is the assessed value. Backup is in the book. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number nine is recommend amendment number one to the Florida Coalition Against Domestic Violence Contract for the Domestic Violence Grant Program and authorize execution of relevant documents. That's a ministerial detail. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number 10 is recommend submission of applications for current Florida Flood Mitigation Assistance Program grant cycle for the elevation of five repetitively flooded structures with homeowners responsible for the matching funds.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask you to amend that to six, there was one more that, that was deemed to be eligible, and it's the property at 16, other than the list that was given you previously, it was, it's the property at 1690 College Parkway. It would be the same thing. It would be an elevation with the homeowner responsible for the, any cost, a match.
Okay, very good. I'm glad to hear that we got an, an extra one in there. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number 11 is recommend the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Land and Water Conservation Fund grant in the amount of $200,000 for improvements to the Baghdad Mill Site, requiring a local match of $80,000 from the TDC. And everybody is on board with this, strong community support and strong support from the TDC. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number 12 is recommend modification to the Florida Division of Emergency Management, extending the Ramblewood Drive Hazard Mitigation Grant, that's HMGP, extend that project due to a delay in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permitting, and I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number 13 is recommend scheduling a public hearing on the amendment, on an amendment to ordinance 2012-01 regarding economic development incentives, which will be for the purpose of correcting a numerical error. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item 14 is recommend Mad Dash for Missions 5K Run on Woodbine Road, Saturday, July 26, 2014, in neighborhoods adjacent to Woodbine United Methodist Church. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Item number 15 is recommend amendment number two to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant Agreement for the Navar Beach Renourishment Annual Monitoring. I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. Following meetings, unless otherwise noted, will be held in the boardroom of the Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. They're published online, and we have them available here for those in the audience that, that would like to have them. I move approval without objection. Here and none, it passes. That concludes the Administrative Committee. Engineers' report, Mr. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, we recommend the modification number one to Task Order Number 27 with CH2M Hill Contract for the Navar Beach Clarifier Rehabilitation, reflecting additional time on the project.
I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes.
Item number two, recommend change order number two to contract with Morgan Contracting, Inc., for the Navar Beach Clarifier Rehabilitation Project, including a net reduction in $18,000 and the addition of 243 days.
I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes.
And number three, we're recommending the bids for the following firms for the repair to the flood-damaged roadways, as low bidders meeting specification with reimbursement from FEMA for the April flooding event. The north area, panhandle grading and paving in the amount of $375,754. The southeast area, panhandle grading and paving in the amount of $695,073. And the southwest areas to Rhodes, Inc., in the amount of $685,000.
I recommend approval without objection. Here and none, it passes.
That concludes the Engineers' report.
Okay. Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend annual emergency management performance award, EMPA, in the amount of $105,806. And the emergency management performance grant, EMPG, in the amount of $75,389, with Florida Division of Emergency Management and authorize execution of relevant documents. I will move approval without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Item two, recommend letter to Escambia County Board of Commissioners regarding regional partnership with installation of 700, 800 megahertz trunked communication system and direct staff to explore funding, financing options for system installation and maintenance. We discussed this on Monday. Ms. Cantu, do you have any? You have a question? Come forward, please.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East in Milton. My questions about this would be, is this system going to coordinate with FEMA and the local, all the local law enforcement organizations? That's one of the things that I heard during the last, one of the last hurricanes that we had, was this, this group couldn't communicate with that group, and this group couldn't communicate with those. Are we gonna be able to communicate among all the organizations?
Yes. Mr. Gomine, do you want to address interoperability?
Yes, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't know about the comment relative to FEMA, but all our public safety organizations within the county, and there's a long laundry list of those, the, all the fire departments, or EMS, and Sheriff's Office, Milton, PD, Gulf Breeze, others utilize the system. So I think the answer to your question is yes. It's a combined public safety system.
Sheriff Hall is coming, follow to the microphone. He can add to this.
I'm sorry?
Sheriff Hall is standing behind you, and he'll add some to this conversation for us. Sheriff Hall?
Yes, ma'am. That, that system does have bridging ability. Of course, in any hurricane, when you bring in agencies from all over the state and possibly out-of-state to assist you, they may possibly have an outdated system that we cannot talk to. But anything that's, that's current, and that's one reason it's very important for us to get current, so we can bridge the communication ability with these agencies. Yes, ma'am.
And the other question that I had. He said something, the, the man that made the presentation said something about an IT, it was actually an IT system. And what, what cautioned me about the IT system was the, the big problem that everybody had with the insurance over the last year, signing up for insurance on, on computer. Is this a computer system, or is it a telephone, or radio, or what?
It, it transmits over through computers and satellites, but, you know, that's something, something totally different. The reason they were having problems is, number one, it probably wasn't set up correctly, and they were just overwhelmed with people. You can, you can always overload any system, but we should not have that problem here. And there again, that's why we need to upgrade our system, so we will have the ability. If we had another hurricane this summer, we would have all kind of problems like that currently. So this, this will, this will prevent those problems.
You'll have protected areas within which to communicate, where you don't share with the general public as well, so that would, would alleviate that other problem.
Yes, there's mutual aid channels in this system, where we can switch over and talk to federal agencies, we can talk to, and, and we're bridging with the Escambia, we're bridging with PPD, we're bridging, so we can, we can talk to them, they can talk to us, because obviously, a lot of the things that we do has no boundaries.
And the company is gonna guarantee that it's gonna work...
Absolutely.
...before they let it go?
Absolutely.
Before you pay for them?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate your interest, appreciate you coming.
I will move that without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Item three, recommend appointment of Shane Nation to the ship, affordable housing advisory committee as recommended by that committee. I will do so without objection.
Here and none, it passes.
Item four, discussion of resolution authorizing release of restrictive covenant, allowing Loaves &amp; Fishes Soup Kitchen to sell 6912 Overman Street to the low-income eligible family. Mr. Gomine, we received another memo on that this week, due to some questions that rose on Monday. Any questions or discussions about this? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just feel like this is not being kept in the nature it was intended. As you see in your backup documentation, there's $250,000 spent to construct in, in these two homes, and we're gonna end up selling at a combined price of $140,000 over less than a five-year period of time. And my feeling is that, you know, as it says right here, there's a net recapture to Loaves &amp; Fishes of $83,000. I just don't feel like this was the intent of this program, to over, you know, to build properties and, and within a few years, sell them at a reduced price, reducing the amount of money that's in this program. I'd feel much better if this $83,000 recapture, and I, I know Loaves &amp; Fishes does wonderful work, and there's a lot of people out there that needs that, but there's also a lot of people that need housing. And I'd, I'd rather this money went back into the housing program for moderate-income folks, or even the house go back into the program for moderate-income and, and low-income folks, rather than sell it at, at what basically is $100,000 loss on the two properties. It's just my comments on that.
Those are requirements of the program. I mean, we, we don't choose who to, who to, if they sell it, they have to sell it to, and they have no other use for the property. I mean, the, the, the world changed. I mean, this was issued after the hurricanes, this was state money, this was, the, the, the effort was to try to take care of the transitional housing, and, and, and that needs changed. And they still have, I believe it's two units that are functioning in that regard, as is Family Promise, so I mean, it's...
Commissioner Lynchard? The funds that, that, that result will be funneled back into the community to assist with homeless and, and low income. So they, they will stay within the, the spirit of the, the original use for which they were intended.
Now, those funds will be in the hands of Loaves &amp; Fishes, though, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Cole?
One final comment. Does Loaves &amp; Fishes operate a facility in Santa Rosa County, or the only one I'm aware of is the one they have in Escambia County?
I do not believe they have a homeless shelter in Santa Rosa County. They would have the other, Mr. Walker mentioned the other, the other homes that are still in the transitional housing program that are on Warren Road. I believe there's two, two of those.
I would just hope in the future that we concern ourselves, and I, I know homeless is all over, all over the world, all over the country, certainly, but that if we're gonna get in, involved in a program like this, that we search out people like Family Promise and stuff that have a presence in our county. So if something like this occurs, the dollars that were generated for, for Santa Rosa County by the state or federal government, whoever, remain in our county.
Mr. Walker, did I understand you correctly, and said that we're bound by the program? What kind of latitude do we have?
Yeah, I think that this outlines the, the procedure to go through with the, the sale of the property. But, but we did, but to answer Mr. Cole's question, I mean, we did have Family Promise. Family Promise was one of the, the entities that, that, on, on that particular strategy that we, that we did use. I think they were the first. I, I mean, that...
Do we have the ability to, to specify what the, what the money does?
That I don't know.
Are you, are you speaking of this, this particular sale?
I'm, I'm thinking of the, the funds that would result from this sale.
Oh.
And, and could we say to, to Loaves &amp; Fishes that we wanted it to address a specific area of concern of this board? And if so, I would say, I, I happen to know that one of the nationwide needs is a homeless shelter for single females. There is no such thing. There's Loaves &amp; Fishes, I mean, there's, there's Family Promise, that's a family situation. If you're female and homeless, there is not a shelter that I am aware of that will accept you.
I think I can add...
If you're, if you're female and homeless, and you present yourself to any of the shelters that I know of in northwest Florida, you're out of luck. They will not admit you. There is not a female shelter that I am aware of. And if we have the ability to earmark this money in some fashion, you know, keep it within the Loaves &amp; Fishes realm, but, but, but request that they address this unique need, I mean, it's absurd, but that's the way it works. I mean, it's absurd, but that's the way it works, apparently, for a lot of complicated reasons. But they will not accept females in the shelters that are... Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
I was just going to address the concern of, may we direct where the money goes? And in 2009, when the, the board approved these restrictive covenants, it, it includes a provision that if the property is sold, that any proceeds go to Loaves and Fishes. And, and that's just a blanket statement. Now, could you request them to address the need or something? I suppose certainly, but the, the agreement entered into at that time just said they would retain the, the proceeds. And I do know of a couple of shelters with some caveats that will accept single females, and there are some program requirements and that kind of thing, but I'd be glad to get you those names.
I'd be very interested in those names. Commissioner Salter?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, I support moving forward, honoring the agreement we have with Loaves and Fishes. Need to make any changes, we can do that in the future.
Duly noted. Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I'll move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item five, recommend submission of application to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant for development of the South Santa Rosa County Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, and I move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
That concludes Public Services.
Public Works Commission, Public Works Committee, Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Item number one is recommend grant easement at the Santa Rosa Soccer and Horse Complex for installation of ground storage tank and associated water lines for reuse reclaimed water project by Pace Water System Incorporated. I do so without objection.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Salter?
Before we approve this, I'd like to ask Mr. Boutwell to come forward, please. If we're going to be, I'm going to say donating the land to Pace Water, I'd like to get Damon's response on potential wavering of tap fees at our new tennis complex, if we get it built.
Yes, sir. We did discuss that at our board meeting Tuesday night. It was asked of me that it might come up, and so our board did approve that we'd trade, can't waive, but we will trade tap fees for these.
Very good. Ms. Jones will enter that into the contract. Thank you, Damon.
I'll move that without objection with the caveat of the, of the, of the trade.
Here, none, it passes.
Okay. All right. All right, item number two is resolution, recommend resolution authorizing Florida Department of Transportation Local Government Emergency Relief Reimbursement Agreement for repairs of the flood damage to the following roads and authorize execution of all documents. It's County Road 199, 191, Munson Highway, in the amount of $76,338.35. County Road 197, Shamukla Highway, in the amount of $16,444.89. County Road 399, East Bay Boulevard, in the amount of $118,416.54. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Thank you. And that concludes Public Works.
Okay, sir. Next was Budget Finance, Budget Finance Management Committee, Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Item number one is recommend bid in the amount of $77,799 from Beard Equipment Company for one compact track loader for road and bridge, is the low bidder meeting specification. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two is recommend rejection of bids received for one front-mount self-propelled broom for road and bridge and reauthorized bidding, and I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three is recommend budget amendment 2014-135 in the amount of $925. Carrying forward crime prevention funds and allocate for the sheriff's office expenditures in the fine and forfeiture, forfeiture fund. I do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item four is recommend budget amendment 2014-136 in the amount of $141,528. Recognizing federal home program, or HUD, grant and allocating to first-time buyers for Escambia Consortium Interlocal Agreement. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item five is recommend budget amendment 2014-137 in the amount of $16,662. Allocating 911 funds as required to repair existing dispatch console equipment and replace six chairs for the 911 center from the enhanced 911 fund, program fund. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item six is recommend budget amendment 2014-138 in the amount of $48,175 from Economic Development Reserves for the Industrial Park Rail Spur Rehabilitation as approved at the May twenty-second, 2014 meeting. Do so without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And finally, as county expenditure and check register, I'll be signing it off and giving, putting, having it delivered to your office. I move that without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
That concludes this report.
Thank you, sir. County Administrator, County Attorney, Public Forum, anybody have anything they wish to bring before the board? All right, see you none, here, none, we are adjourned.